Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. This is the School Board Budget Work Session on April 25th, which is, correction, April 15th, Tuesday. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The time now is 5:04 PM. We have an agenda before us. How would the Board like to proceed?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is our budget presentation, starting with a review of the School Board's fiscal year '26 budget. And that looks like it's Dr. Hummer's line item, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, School Board, for taking time out of your busy schedules. This was something we added on last year to get the full board's conversation and input before we present the finalized budget to you all at the meeting next week. We want to get some input and information from you in regards to where we currently stand with the budget, so that we can put that presentation together for you all with the resolution for next week. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Anderson here in a second, but I do want to discuss a couple items. So this is what we like to call the last leg of the race with our budget process. As you all know, the Board of Supervisors approved the budget last week, and also the state is still in the process of working through finalizing their budget as well, which hopefully will come to fruition on May 2nd. We're going to dive into that in a little bit here in regards to what that means for us. The biggest takeaway from today and input that we need from you all is there is a shortfall, as we've discussed with you all, and we have to make some decisions. I do have some recommendations in regards to what we should cut, but we definitely want to hear from you in regards to those recommendations, so we can prepare that presentation as resolution for next week. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Anderson. This is a work session, so we want to hear from you all, so we will definitely take intentional pauses throughout, and please provide us with your feedback and input. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Anderson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so we'll start with a quick review on what your proposed budget was, or is. First, we'll start with the timeline. It's hard to read from this standpoint, but we're at the last two boxes, which, last three boxes. Tonight, we're discussing the shortfall, and then with the hopes of you adopting a budget next week at your regular school board meeting. And then, as Dr. Hummer said, May 20th would be your next school board meeting, which we hope to have more information based upon where the state lands, and at that time, we'll come forth with potential budget adjustments at that time. Just want to remind us of the School Board, the budget priorities that you set for us last October. So I'll take a pause here. Instructional initiatives, compensation packages, and addressing operational funding. So let's dive right into your salary initiative. Here's an all-staff overview. And as you can see here, the pay scale averages as proposed. Again, just want to reiterate that that does not mean that each person on those pay scales would get that percentage. It's the pay scale average. And just a reminder that our classified staff, that includes all of our hourly employees, those who are eligible for overtime. So it includes bus drivers, cafeteria workers, our admin assistants, and custodians. So let's dive into the teacher initiative. That 4.9% is a $5.4 million cost. It's broken into three components. At minimum, we want to provide a cost-of-a-living adjustment for all of our teachers at 2.5%. Then we wanted to enhance the scale, because the governor and the state came forth with a 3% compensation initiative for our instructional and support staff. And then lastly, we have some salary goals for our scales. That is to uncluster our years of experience. We're doing that over a five-year plan, as well as provide a step movement for our staff, and that 5,000 bump at year '24. It's currently at year '25. So all three of those components together get to a $5.4 million cost, or a 4.9% increase to the teacher pay scale. Classified staff, again, cost-of-a-living adjustment, 2.5. Enhance the scale to get to the state 3%, and as well as increase the start to be more competitive, uncluster a year of experience, and provide a step movement for a total initiative of $2 million towards our classified pay scale. Our other professionals, these are our speech pathologists, psychologists. Again, cost-of-a-living adjustment, enhance the scale to 3%, uncluster years of experience, and provide a step. That's a $304,000 cost for that scale. And then our administrators, supervisors, and coordinators. 2.5% cost-of-a-living adjustment, enhance the scale to get to the 3% state, as well as uncluster a year of experience and provide a step for a total cost of $623,000. And then we also had some additional salary initiatives in the budget proposal. Some pay upgrades for our instructional and bus assistants because of the job responsibilities that they're fulfilling. This moves them up a pay grade. Our school security officers, this is to be more competitive with surrounding localities, and that moves them up three pay grades. And then our middle school lead teachers, to repurpose them to dean of students. This makes them a 12-month position, and you can see the cost there on the slide.
Got a quick question on that one, Ms. Anderson. For the middle school lead teachers, does that go back to the last slide as far as supervisors? And, what was the other part?
Yeah, no. Yep, it does not. Yeah, these are treated as teacher salary. The reason it increased to $60,000 was they went from 10 months to 12 months, but they're still on the teacher pay scale.
So this one go supervisor coordinator?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to get clarity on it.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
It's proposed that the middle school lead teachers, as deans of students, would work 12 months, yes.
So they're here except for vacation.
They're currently here in a 10-month contract.
But this is going to make them 12 months?
Correct.
But they'll be here?
They'll be here. No, no, are you saying here in this building?
They're going to be working, yes. They're going to be working, coming in.
Yes.
To work.
Yes.
Not in, not right here.
Yes, they would be working 12 months.
And I have one. Could you explain to me exactly what, I understand the definition of cluster. Explain to me what this uncluster you keep bringing up means.
So say, for example, well, it started back with the Great Recession, when, in years that we were not able to give a pay increase. So what that did, you could have, on one pay step, you could have multiple years of experienced staff on one pay step. So say, for example, pay step two had everyone with years of experience, three through five. So what the unclustering does, in that example, moves somebody with year experience five down to the next step to unbreak that years of experience cluster. Does that help?
No. No. It moves them down?
It helps, it helps to better align the pace, the years of experience with the pay step.
Years of experience with the pay step?
Yes.
Okay. So, so it's a matter of years and not qualifications necessarily?
It's based on years of experience.
Okay.
Another salary initiative in the proposal addresses special education. This is a pay supplement for what we refer to as our Level Two, or our Learning Center, Special Education Teachers and Instructional Assistance. So it would provide 3,000 for our Special Education Learning Center teachers, as well as an additional $1,000 for those instructional assistants.
And then this is built into the salary, not just a bonus?
It would be built into their salary.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear, so they can hear that out there.
So then, the next part takes us to the second phase of our staffing standards. The budget proposal includes a net request of 40 additional full-time equivalent positions, eight of which are due to compliance. That's our ELL or ESOL teachers. And I'll just pause here for a minute to give you time to look at the table, see if there's any questions.
Dr. Hummer, could you run us through one more time? If, I know the ELL teachers is a requirement, that we have to have that.
Yes, sir.
If those positions go unfilled, we'll take that money and use it toward, and we'll get dollars at the end of the year? Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's through what's called our staff savings. So we build that into our budget every year. So it's not just necessarily those positions, it's all of our positions across the board. Now, we are hopeful that we fill those positions, but it's also built into our budget, because every year we are going to have vacancies. But not only are we going to have vacancies, but we are going to have specific situations such as, and I think it's in this presentation, no, we talked about it last time. So, for example, if we have a 20-year teacher that decides to retire, and they leave us, and we replace it with a first-year teacher, that difference in that salary goes to cost savings, because it was budgeted in the beginning of the year for a 20-year teacher. So we're always going to have that cost savings that's built in, and then we will discuss how to spend that through unobligated, as well as end-of-year cost savings, which 99% of the time goes towards our capital projects, which is pretty standard across the Commonwealth. That's what most school divisions utilize that money for. As a matter of fact, if I may, what a lot of school divisions do is they actually have a memorandum of understanding with the county, that when there is cost savings at the end of the year, that the county, school board, would then just use that money towards capital dollars, so you don't have to keep going back and forth downtown, because you're always going to have that cost savings. Now, of course, what we don't want to do, and this is going to be through trust and good faith, we don't want to have $10 million at the end of every year, right? So we want to make sure that we're within that percentage, and that is what's worked into that arrangement, so you don't go above, say, 1% or what have you, so that we stay within that range. So something for us to consider. I know we're still working on developing that relationship in regards to spending of those monies, but that would be something that we could look into doing, so to address your question. Does that help?
Yep.
Ready to move to the next slide? We talked about NREP, our share of the programs increasing, because Winchester City is pulling the early childhood component out of the program. So there's a greater percentage of Frederick County students being served at the program. There was a $250,000 ask of the Instructional Department to focus on a data management system, as well as curriculum development and professional learning. We need to update our baseline budget, because we installed additional modulars at Middletown that's going on right now, so we want to be able to pay for those leases next year. So that's what you see here on this, on this slide. And then we have a safety and security ask of 124,200. That is, again, to build out a recurring budget for equipment and safety needs, as well as upgrade our leadership position overseeing safety and security. Transportation for replacement buses. This gets us up to a recurring cycle of 13 buses to replace annually. I can remember when our buses cost $100,000 per unit. They're now 150 and going up. And then other items also included in the request, technology, $75,000 for device replacements, the school nutrition transfer to help that fund, $100,000, and the human capital management system that you heard Mrs. Frickley present in one of our finance committees. Our debt service fund, the county has fully appropriated. The debt service fund, our ask was 1.5 million more, and we will receive that. And the capital projects fund, if you remember, our request totaled almost 15 million. The county is giving us 4 million from their capital projects fund. So the list was in priority order, so you'll see these projects as what is proposed to spend the $4 million on. And the revenue increase that we're receiving from the county, that was in the adopted budget by the Board of Supervisors last week, it results in just over 4.1 million more for our school operating fund, 1.5 million more for debt service, and 4 million for So here's a look at the revenue side of our school operating fund. You can see the state revenue is projected to increase by 12 million, but what's included in here is what the General Assembly proposed, which was higher than the initial budget that was introduced by the governor back in December. After the General Assembly concluded, the governor did veto some of what the General Assembly did, or what the General Assembly provided. So the veto results in about 1.6 million less than what the General Assembly had planned for us. And then the county there, you can see the 4 million increase. Federal revenue, that's declining because of all of those expired federal dollars that we received under ESER. And then the miscellaneous source that you see there going up almost a million, that's because of our partnership with George Mason University and the Data Lab School. So with the county amount coming in, 1.2 million less than our ask, and the governor reducing state by 1.6, that results in a $2.8 million shortfall that we need to discuss tonight.
Correct. So Mr. Bell asked, the money from the state is still up in the air, so we could potentially get that money back from the state. So the governor has until midnight of May 2nd, and he'll have a decision by then. Right now, there's speculation of what potentially can happen after that, because it's never gotten this far before in the history of Virginia. So they're not sure if he's just going to finalize it, or if he doesn't, where it's going to go, if it goes back to the General Assembly. So they're still working on what that's going to look like.
So say he reinstates those dollars, right? Do we need to go, come back and figure out what we're going to do with those dollars then?
So two things. Great question. First is, the county appropriated us for the full 3.3 million. So if the state does give us those dollars, it would come down to how you all would want to spend that money. Our recommendation is, based on the items that we cut, we would add it back towards those items. So, but yes, you all would have to decide how that money is spent. That is correct.
Dr. Hummer, could you explain to everyone this new ratio that the county established to indicate that we would not receive the 1.2 million?
Yeah, so we talked about this a little last week at the Finance Committee meeting, if you recall, and how they explained it was they wanted to establish a standard across the board in regards to how each of these entities that the county funds receives dollars every year. And that ratio was based on inflation, as well as the population growth or decrease. And they based that across the board. So for the fire department, EMTs, Parks and Rec, and us, the issue, as I explained last week, is that if you have, say, 1,000 people who come to Frederick County next year, and of those 400 students, or 400 students, those students might each have their own unique needs. You might have 100 that are students with disabilities, 100 that are English language learners, 50 are gifted, and we have to make sure that we're providing the services for those students. The proposal that we came forward, when I got all this information from our administrators and from our central office folks, as I mentioned, you all, we're at about a $25 million ask, because of, over the years, we haven't received these additional positions because of the revenues we weren't receiving from the state and the locality. So we're already behind in that regard. So with that ratio, it makes sense, as we've talked about, because we definitely want to establish a criteria across the board for all of these entities, but that criteria also needs to be applied based on the needs that we have presented. And that's one of the things, the promises that I've made, is that we're not just going to come forward with a $25 million ask. We're going to come forward with, what does our staffing standard say? What does our population say? So that we can be good stewards of our dollar and get exactly what we need year after year, and build that out like we've been talking about. Not asking for all of it upfront, but over a three- to five-year period, get us to where we need to be. As Mrs. Anderson just mentioned, with our pay scales. Our pay scales have been deteriorated over the years, because we haven't been getting pay increases. So that's a big chunk of money that we want to fix, so that we can compensate our staff, and then we can reallocate that money in other places. Staffing, and I want to get ahead of myself, but I'm very, very concerned about staffing for this upcoming year. Yes, the eight ESOL positions are compliance, but if you saw, we had 13 general ed teachers that we wanted to add on. So what that means is, a majority of those positions were at the elementary level. We were trying to keep our K3 class sizes down, because of class size reduction, and we were going to be adding some positions to that. The reason it didn't fall under compliance is because our other grades are not at that max. They're close, but they're not at that max. And at the elementary level, we want to make sure that our class sizes are as small as possible, because that, there is a direct impact on student learning at class size, especially at the elementary level. So now what we're going to have to do is, we're going to have to move fourth and fifth grade teachers to K3 to get that class size down, thus increasing our class sizes at fourth and fifth grade. So again, not ideal, not something we want to do, so if we do get this additional money from the state, that'll be the first thing that we have, we will address. But again, when it comes down to compliance, we are in compliance. It was just that local standard that we're trying to meet.
I hate to hear that we're, look, I know.
I know.
I know there's no easy answer to this. I hate to hear that we're cutting it, cutting, or cutting is the wrong term, reallocating teachers from middle school, because that seventh grade, that sixth grade and seventh grade year, well, all three of those middle school years, they're transition years, they're transition periods.
I'm sorry, Ms. Klein, I'm sorry. It's fourth and fifth, so it would be at the higher elementary grades. I apologize.
Okay, but still.
Still the same, same issue. I just want to clarify that. Agree, I totally agree with you.
Especially fifth grade going, so another transition point.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fifth grade year going into our middle schools?
Correct.
Okay. So, we do that. What are we looking at class size-wise in fifth grade, fourth and fifth grade?
Well, we like to keep that below 22. Well, we want it at 22, based on our local standard, so it's going to get up there. Like, we have some classrooms at Middletown and Jordan Springs that are 25 and 26.
Right.
Which are not ideal.
No, okay.
And this is all because of this new ratio?
We were, we were cut from 5.3 down to 4.1.
So it doesn't sound like a very appropriate way to allocate funds to a school system that has a more variable cost to how we deal with children that come into our system? Because it seems that a lot of our kids, we don't know if they're going to need, and I think I've made this argument before, there, we get, what's the amount per child that is the average?
7,000?
7,000. So, you know, I'm fortunate, kids like mine, I don't think need the full 7,000, but there are students who require more than that. And if we get a larger number of those students, they're not actually budgeted for here.
Correct.
So I'm baffled as to why this is done this way. On top of which, didn't the supervisors want to decrease that amount even further?
There was a conversation last Wednesday, where they had some conversations of cutting across the board. You are correct, Mr. Bell.
Was that due to re, I guess, look at the ratio, thinking that it was maybe a better ratio, because it doesn't seem like they, sorry, I'm not trying to cause problems, but it does, I, this is a horrible way to try and budget a school system, to try and budget anything. We don't know how much they're really getting through the taxes. That became clear. They've created a ratio that doesn't make sense, and then they want to go ahead, or one of them wants to go ahead and cut even more. Is there anything we can do, reaching out to board members of the supervisors, to work with them? I mean, I, just to help explain what the situation is?
So two things I want to add to that, Madam Chair, if I may, is, as I've been sharing with you all, is continuously having conversations, encouraging you all to talk, reach out to your counterpart, reach out to the board. You all have done that. I know a lot of you've had those conversations. But the second piece is, and hopefully there might be some light at the end of this tunnel, you know, I'm a silver lining guy, is, you know, we'll hopefully get that additional money from the state, but there were conversations, and we can, we can ask about this, is, they said they would go back and talk about supplementals. So one of the things that did come up at, at the meeting.
Supplementals, can you go?
Yeah, so supplementing the budget. So if there, if there are additional things that they can add on after the fact, we can go down and ask for that. And that did come up numerous times. So the Wednesday, prior to last Wednesday, we had a work session with them, and they were trying to add on that additional 1.3, or 1.2, excuse me, to get up to 5.3. And in that, there was a $500,000 surplus that they were going to put towards us. And then there was also, if you recall, some proffer dollars that they had received, and then there was also going to be a shift of the buses from their capital fund. That would have gotten us up to that 1.2. And it was close, and we were, they were having conversations about it, but then in the end, and the rationale they used was because they were cutting across the board, that wouldn't be fair, because they would be increasing us. But as I've shared with each of you, my argument was, that's not the number we gave them. We started at the 5.3. So, so again, it's where we are. So if push comes to shove, we'll see what happens with the state dollars, but we could go back downtown to say, we want to add on four additional elementary teachers, because we don't want our class sizes that large. We would have that conversation, and then we would go downtown, Kristin and I, and ask for those, those monies for those positions. So that is something that we could do, if that is something you all would be interested in. It is something that, we, if we don't get this additional money from the state, we are going to have to do something.
So you want to wait, and I'm sorry, you want to wait until we find out how much we're getting from the state before you entertain going downtown?
I would, that would be my recommendation, Mr. Bell. Yes, sir.
So then, I, I mean, is this something we have to vote on, as to whether we want them to go downtown, or do we just say, go downtown?
Well, kind of where my head is on this right now, is, I think the, I think the Board of Supervisors, I'm trying to give the most respectful interpretation of their ratio, okay? I, so, I think what they were trying to create was an equitable, an equitable allocation of funds to every entity in the county. Now, this is a new strategy, I know. New strategy, first time they've ever done it. Unintended consequences of new strategies, we're realizing it here on our end. So I feel, from the conversations that I've had and heard, I feel fairly confident that if we go back with a business case for the reason why we need these teachers, which is clear to me, I've toured Middletown, I've seen how packed those classrooms are. There's clear research out there that if we, if we reduce staffing from fourth grade and fifth grade, those two grades, and increase the class sizes, those are two formative years. One, fourth grade, that's where they're tested, fourth and eighth for reading. We already know that we need work on our SOL scores and our reading, reading scores, so there, there's one business case for it. Another case is, you're prepping these young kids to go into middle school, which we all know, we all know is a tough time. So, most respectful interpretation, I think they were trying to be equitable across the board. That all being said, I think once we figure out, May 2nd, what, what we're really dealing with, then absolutely go back downtown. I don't think that's something we need to vote on. I think there's, that's just a consensus from this work session, from, and probably from next Monday's meeting when we, or Tuesday's meeting when we adopt the budget.
I'm hopeful that they're willing to listen to us ask for supplementals. That's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So.
That is a good thing, but when will we actually have a realistic idea of how many students are actually going to be attending next year?
We, we have that right now. So, so every year, we.
You've got, you've got an increase, and it's, and it's.
Well, so we have, as, and I share this with you guys every year, so we have a 10-year projection of what our numbers are. And of the last four years, our projections, we've gone above that. So for example, we started this year to be at, it was like 14.3? We're already at 14.6.
Okay.
And growing. So we have that number, and then as we get closer to the start of the year, we recalculate that using the numbers from downtown with developments, and we'll have that idea. So we've been spot on.
September.
September 30th is when we'll have an update to those numbers. Yes, ma'am.
We just don't know what needs they're going to have. We know the numbers, we just, we don't know if they're IEPs, if they're, you know, disabilities that we have to accommodate, things like that, that cost a lot more.
Isn't there any way that, that you can ask these questions when people are signing their children up? their children up?
It's my, it's my understanding.
Yes.
That, Ms. Martin, that they do, but then there's some, some kids that come to school and then they get, they, teachers realize, ooh, this little fellow needs help in reading. He appears behind, let's get him, let's get him evaluated and get him on an IEP. That's something that parents don't know. And as far as projections for student enrollment, they don't know exactly today. Like, we won't know May 2nd, the exact numbers for next year. But based on historical projections and historical county growth, you can make a pretty good estimate. The only wild card, the variable to this is the student needs. We will not know. We can guess.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, if I may, so Ms. Martin, you're asking a really good question, and we use a formula for that. And that's essentially how the county uses a formula to determine how many students are going to move into each development. We do that for how many students that come forward. So right now, we're at about 13% are English language learners, 14% is students with disabilities, little less than, than 1% is gifted. So what we do is, is we take those numbers and we calculate that in for every 10 students. So for every 10 kids, 1.3 is going to be a student with a disability, 1.4 is going to be a student with an English language learner. So, and then we're able to calculate that, and that is what drives this. So when we present this to you, it's not, let's just pull some random students. Because another piece is, to this point is, we also have our elementary school class sizes, because that's another impact, because that's what we're seeing, the impact of the general ed teachers, is those class sizes need to be at 18 for class size reduction. So if we know we're getting K-3, then that's how we can plan ahead for those positions, which is what we're doing. And we also have kindergarten enrollment happening right now, and that gets factored in as well.
K-3, that's.
Kindergarten through third grade is what's called class size reduction, and we do receive dollars for keeping class sizes 18 students and less.
So the teachers that we've been hiring, have we been hiring more for the K-3 than the other?
I wouldn't say more. It would, it's going to be based on the needs of our students. So what we also do naturally is every year, our elementary principals take a look at their projections for their numbers for next year. And if they see that they're going to have more fifth graders than fourth graders, they move those teachers to the next, to the fifth grade. Same thing with kindergarten. If they see that their class sizes are getting larger, if we didn't add positions on, they move them from the older grades down. So until we can get ahead of that with our budget, they, they work through those positions within their building.
Okay.
Which is also good budget practice, too. We don't want to just keep adding elementary teachers when they're able to work it out. But when our numbers are higher than what our standard says, that's when it turns into a problem, which they are. Thank you. Good questions, Ms. Martin. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So as we can see on the slide, here are some recommendations of how to meet that shortfall. Again, within mind that if we receive the 1.6 from the state, we would come back to your school board meeting on May 20th with recommended adjustments. But to meet that shortfall, a way around that is to reduce the position ask by 32 of those FTEs and only fund the eight compliance or ELL positions, as well as replace, reduce the replacement bus from four to two, which would get us to 11 buses replaced.
And the original ask was for two buses in the original budget, in your original budget ask, right, Dr.?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Yeah, so, so, Madam Chair, if I may, how we came to this recommendation is, we did not want to touch compensation packages because we want to keep high-quality teachers. Everybody around us is about where we are in regards to compensation increases, so we want to make sure that we stay competitive and we don't lose teachers. And that was, this was the next highest number. I mean, we could have piecemealed and pulled things from here and there, which we still can do if that's what you would like to have happen. We felt that this was, again, not, not ideal. We don't want to cut anything out of this budget. This, this was the bare bones, needs-based budget that I presented, so this was very hard to cut anything out of this budget. So that, that is why this was the next biggest chunk of money that would have been the cleanest to cut, and especially with those two buses added on. We are hopeful that we'll get more money from the state, and if we don't, I am hopeful and confident that we will go down to the county and ask for more supplemental positions, specifically the elementary teachers. I think the other, all these positions we had were added on to the building, but there's definitely some other positions that I don't want to wait, but they can wait, such as the special education department chairs, the special instructional services support staff. Those are positions that can, that can wait, relatively speaking. None of these positions can wait, you know what I mean there? So we, we believe that we just want to, if we add positions on, it would be at the elementary school, as well as, there were some other middle school positions as well that we wanted to add on as well, as part of this, this staffing standard. So.
My fellow board members, I want us to be conscious of, well, we want to, the idea of not touching the salary packages is to keep and maintain good quality teachers. However, increasing the classroom size and the load that these teachers that exist are going, going to have to take will also be a concern for them and could cause our good quality teachers to go somewhere else where they don't have as many students to take care of and still make more. I'm not saying this is not a good idea, or this isn't the way to go, I'm just saying we need to be conscious about that. Because as a teacher, I know having 25 students versus 22 students, it may not seem like a big difference, but it's a huge difference. Those three extra students, especially if you have IEPs in class, especially if you have students with disabilities, you know, the, the classroom size itself does, is not necessarily indicative of having 25 students, just the physical space, let alone having to work with 25 students versus 22 or 18. So, and the reality is, in some classrooms, you're going to have 28, 29, and 30 students. So.
Madam Chair, could I ask that we go back to the slide that lists out the positions, that table? Just want everybody to get a visual of what we're being asked to do. If you're following along here at home, here's the damage. So when I look at this, I, I do understand what you meant a moment ago about some of the things that would have been nice to, like, things that we need, but things that are not essentially a crisis where we need to have them right now. Here's my read of, of what I'm seeing. If I understood your process this year, we were trying to do a better job of reallocating positions we already had between the schools, instead of allowing some schools to kind of do their own thing and just accumulate more over time. And a very intentional process happened whereby we said, here are the actual needs, here are the resources, and how can we reallocate? Anything that we're asking for up here is already after the consideration of using resources responsibly. So the reason that this, the reason this bothers me more than I think it normally would is because this is after we already essentially right-sized everything, before we asked for anything. And if you're wondering next year at home, why does this matter to me? We were asking for three more school security officers, there will be three fewer adults keeping your kids safe next year. There will be five fewer adults making sure your kids have clean, clean restrooms, and so on, and so on, and so on. Schools cost money, and we are not a small community anymore, and, and the ideas that were put forth last week for raising very modest amounts of revenue without any real impact on taxpayers did not get the consideration that they should have gotten. I think that Supervisor Dunn raised several great points for months at a time, that taking money out of capital is not a solution, it's a Band-Aid. And the last thing I would add is this, that some of the ideas for, for bringing in revenue are things that would not have hit our vulnerable populations like seniors. And so that is something that I know all of us up here are sensitive to, and that's why we don't ask to waste money. So the, the heartburn here is not just that we're not getting the things that we need, but this is after we already right-sized what we had.
One thing that's very concerning to me is we are looking at a whole new set of, of standards this fall for our students, and they're stricter standards, they're higher standards, which means we need more teachers. That part scares me. So we have that on the cusp. We have a fourth high school, we're going to need a staff, and we clearly have a growing population. So my question, we have some, we have some lights at the end of the tunnel. We have the potential to receive more from the state. We have the potential to go back for supplementals. Do we need to approve, quote unquote, approve this budget with these reductions next week? Can we wait until after we find out on May 7th, until after we get more information on what we're going to have?
So my recommendation would be for you all to approve it next week because we have to get ahead of contracts and get those out in process for our team. I mean, ideally, we don't want to go past the, the May meeting, but that's going to be pushing it very, very tight for our teams. So I would not recommend that because we have to get these to the employees before they go home for over the summer. So not recommended. But again, we know we're potentially going to get more money from the state, and we also know that we can at least go downtown and ask to add on some additional positions. I want to be very strategic about that. I don't think we should go and ask for all of these positions unless that's what you all want to do. Hopefully, we get money from the state, and then we decide what are those positions that we are in dire need. These are all needs, but dire need would, my recommendation would be elementary, as well as some others, and we can talk through that. Back to the original question, though, when we get to that point, you all would have to approve that before we go downtown and ask for it, of course. But my recommendation would be to, to approve this, talk about what items you want to see cut, but then we get this additional money, we can add it back on. Because that, that's not going to change. The county has already approved that. There are going to be no adjustments. The only way we can go is up. So that would, that's why, that would be my recommendation.
So basically, what we need to do is just approve what we feel is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can adjust things. It's not set in stone.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. I wouldn't recommend changing pay scales, but yes, you, we could make adjustments to, to these items as we see fit. Yes.
I have a question, Dr. Hummer. The, the speed cameras that are going up or are up, where does that money go to for the county?
So I haven't, I can follow up with Sheriff Milholland. My, my understanding was the money was going to go towards, like, supporting students, but I, I didn't get final confirmation on that. So I can definitely follow up with him to see.
I mean, I don't know how much it is, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, back to the speed camera thing, that was one of my heartburns with it is, when I talked with John Jewell, I said, hey, where do you think that money's going to go? And he, he said, he'd like it to go to, toward the schools, but liking and actually happening, I don't know. I know the biggest percentage of it goes to the speed camera company, you know? Yeah, this, this isn't Frederick County funded. This is a, no, this is a private organization. Yeah.
I'm in the wrong business.
Oh, yeah. And then that's one of the reasons I'm totally against it.
I want to be an orthodontist.
Geez, I know. That's ridiculous.
You know, a small percentage of it could go toward the schools, so, you know, better than a sharp stick in the eye. So when I'm looking at this budget, you know, I think what we have to do is really be strategic about this. We've got what we've got, we can complain about it and, and all of that, or, you know, we can adjust fire. So what I'm thinking is, with all the other schools in the Commonwealth, they're all facing that same cut, right? So to one of your points, Mr. Bell, is, yeah, there might be another county out there that, that's not facing it as, as, as rough. I guarantee Clark County is. I guarantee a lot of the surrounding counties are, maybe not Loudoun, but, you know, I, I think, you know, from a retention standpoint, the teachers are smart. They know that everybody's kind of under the gun right now, and they know how good they've got it here. However, I think that, you know, if we go downtown and ask for those supplemental positions, you know, asking from a, a good business standpoint, I think we can do that. But I, I think part of it is we still have to keep our lines of communication open, you know, and that, that goes out to not just reaching out to our own counterparts, but chairman at large, talking to others, like I, like I just brought up, I talked with John Jewell about the traffic camera thing. But yeah, I think that, that if we open up those lines of communication and kind of figure out what their wants and needs are, you know, and, you know, have that intelligent conversation with them, I think we can pull together and do what's best for the county and for the kids here in Frederick County Public Schools. So I would encourage all board members to, to keep those lines of communication open. It's, it'll be a lot easier when it comes time to, to add, to make those ask. But yeah, so we've got what we've got, so let's figure out what to do now. I'm okay for now. I know I'm the one who brought up the two extra buses looking forward toward the fourth high school. I mean, it's like the seven Ps, you know, prior proper planning prevents piss poor performance. But if we, just like Ms. Anderson said, you know, it went from 100,000 to 150 with those buses. I think during my time on the board, we've went up from 125 for 130 to 150. So it's, it's not going to get cheaper.
No.
You know, so that's kind of the reason I was trying to plan that out a little bit sooner rather than later. Those FTE positions, it's, it's rough, but I, I think Dr. Hummer's got a, a good head on his shoulders when it comes to, like, let's address the needs in the elementary So yeah, I, let's, let's adjust fire, and I'm, I'm good with these recommendations. And maybe we can, maybe we can see where we can go with supplementals.
Dr. Hummer, Ms. Anderson, would it be possible to provide us before our April 22nd meeting, April 22nd, right?
Next week. Yes, sir.
April 22nd meeting, the strategic way that you would choose which positions to fill, were we to ask for or get the money, and how much that would be? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do that.
Excellent. To everybody, just so we can see what the ask is. And then the second thing is, just a call out to the citizens, folks, talk to your supervisor, go to the meeting, tell them how you feel about it. If you disagree with it, tell them you disagree. If you agree with what we're asking for, then tell them you agree with what we're asking for. Put the pressure on, and that will help get what it is that we need to have a successful school year. So that's it.
Now, knowing the people that we've, we've elected to do these things, I really think that if we have some, have some needs that we can prove, okay, and take it before them with this supplement, I do believe that they will meet those needs. I, I don't, I don't think they're going to just say no, okay? But we have to prove to them that we truly do need it and explain why. And it's only fair to them and the public to understand this, okay?
Madam Chair, can I ask you a clarifying question about the 1.6 from the state? So where it is now, right, is that the governor sent back with some line items vetoed. My understanding, just from the speculative news coverage, though, is that they're not going to sustain several of the vetoes that he made. Is that why we think that we're likely going to get that 1.6 or something close to it?
Correct, yeah. So Dr. Erskine, what, what happened is, you're right, the governor did make some vetoes and then sent it back to the General Assembly, and the General Assembly, within like a day, sent it back with their original proposal. So now the original proposal is back on his desk. So now he has until May 2nd, and this is what I was sharing earlier, is that this has never happened before, so we don't know what's going to happen next. But what the speculation is, is he can either sign it, he could veto it again and send it back if he wants to continue to send it back and forth, or he can go back to his original second year of the biennium, which would cut us even more. So we're hopeful that those last two things don't happen, and we're hopeful that he signs off on what came over from the General Assembly. Because the biennium is two years, and every year, the governor always makes adjustments and amendments, and then, of course, the General Assembly will go ahead and make adjustments and amendments. So it's a lot of back and forth. So that's why, right now, we're speculating we potentially could get, get some more there. Or we might not get anything. We're just hopeful that we don't get less, because that would be tragic. We're just hopeful that we don't get less, because that would be tragic.
So, what Dr. Erskine is going back to is my original, just behind my question about can we wait till the May meeting? When do the contract, I know Ms. Freckley's going to give me stink eyes, I understand, but I'm trying to, trying to get everything that we all want here. Is there a way that we could push this to the May meeting? How much, how much time, how much time would that give you? Is that possible? I understand we could vote this in next week. I just don't like it. I don't like it, and if we have the opportunity where we think we may be able to not have to make these cuts, I'd rather take that with a compressed timeline.
Sure. I would just offer that in competition with our neighbors who are going to move on this prior to May, they would have an advantage in committing to their salary scales to then make offers, and we would be behind on that.
Okay, I get it. All right, so strategically, because I understand recruitment and retention right now is very hard, and that competition factor with our region, especially the L County that shall not be named, is high. So, okay. So, essentially, if we vote this in, I'm vote, this board member is voting for the pay scales and not for this, but it's the-
Sure.
I'm having to be Solomon and split the baby here.
But pay scales, more important.
That's more, that's vital at this stage.
We back into the June 15th date amongst localities in the state, meaning we're not hiring after June 15th. And so, if we're pushing till May, that really shortens that window.
That recruitment window.
Really shortens it.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would also, and this doesn't only affect teacher contracts, this would affect contracts as far as-
All contracts across the board.
Yeah, cap contracts, you know, whoever we get the soap for the bathrooms from, it affects everything, right? Because it's our annual budget, where we budget for those certain items.
More staffing, I mean, Ms. Anderson, I mean, soap, no, we'll continue to get soap, but, I know what you mean, no.
Construction contracts, everything.
But we wouldn't have an executed budget, to your point.
Correct.
Right, 100%.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, rub your hand on rocks.
Just to further your point, teachers are starting to interview now, and have been since March, honestly, to get positions for the next school year. Even existing teachers within Frederick County for other positions within Frederick County or elsewhere are looking to have already started. March, April is usually the two big months. I know this because I did this. Generally speaking, in June, in late May and June, nobody's hiring, because they've already adopted the positions that they're going to have to fill. So, my two cents.
I don't like any of the options.
We could always vote, we could always vote no and put it back in their court.
No, no. We need to move this forward.
Then we wouldn't get anything.
Right, exactly.
We don't want that, we don't want that.
How big of a can do you have?
Yeah, so there's no, Madam Chair, if I may, to kind of talk through this, this was just discussion, there's no voting today. This is going before you all on Tuesday, so you have some time to think through that. The item that I do have here is what those additional positions would be if we were to get that additional money, so we'll definitely add that into my presentation, and then you all will vote, or move it to the May meeting. I would second that, as I shared earlier, is that moving this to May would definitely put us behind. I understand the predicament we're in, again, we don't want to be in this space, but procedurally, you can push it to May, we just don't recommend it.
No, it sounds like the negatives of pushing it to May far outweigh the positives-
Yes, ma'am.
-hanging on to it.
Would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good question.
So, we'll just move on with the presentation at this point. So, here's what the budget resolution looks like, what the Board of Supervisors adopted last week. We're at just over a $311 million, all funds included, is appropriated. Again, this was to get you talking in preparation to approve a budget at your meeting next week. At that point, we'll have a motion for you. Dr. Huber will present the final presentation, and then you'll be asked to approve a budget. And then we'll follow up in May, on May 20th, at your next board meeting of any potential adjustments as a result of the state concluding on the state budget.
Can we treat you like a credit card and give you pre-approval?
I don't recommend that, but, yeah, I would definitely, yeah, we can wait until that meeting, we can see what happens on May 2nd, and then go from there with those conversations. Yes, sir.
That concludes the presentation.
That's what we're about.
We're trying to balance it out.
That's what we're about.
Snide remarks?
Why are you looking at me? Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.